Jerry Orland, see if you can get staff to bring in some more chairs? If we have any more chairs. Hmm? I want to, it's a wonderful turnout tonight. I want to thank everyone for turning out. We have Roswell Inc. here, the Downtown Development Authority, and they're going to talk to you about some of their ideas about how to encourage revitalization of this car. I know that with the waning demand for retail, we're suffering.
Steve.
I don't know what the answers are. And I'm not sure if they know what the answers are, perhaps you do, but they know what the tools are that we can use to try to encourage redevelopment. Here you go. Microphone is now working. You could, you know, I'm not going to repeat what I just said because it was unimportant. But I am going to introduce Steve Stroud with Roswell Inc. to kick this off. And Steve, and then we'll hit from the DDA next. Roswell staff is here if there are any questions that come up that are addressed to staff. But we hope to leave a lot of this meeting to hear from you and to have a discussion with you. Steve Stroud.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can everybody hear? Okay, good. I'm Steve Stroud, Roswell resident. I'm also Executive Director of Roswell Inc. And I think it's important tonight to explain what Roswell Inc. is. Five years ago, actually in January, we started Roswell Inc. And that program was started as a public-private partnership with the city of Roswell. Our role is to create jobs in the city and create economic strength within the business community, to connect the businesses that are here and hopefully keep the businesses that are here and keep them active. Our role is also to be facilitator, to work like tonight. Again, the mayor was kind enough to invite us to come speak about what we can do in the future on the Hoken Bridge Road corridor. Redevelopment is what we have left in Roswell. We're not Alpharetta with large campuses of office, and we're also not an area that is shy about what we want. And it's important that tonight, as a homeowner, you and a property owner, we hear from you. But also, as a property owner and a homeowner and a father of three girls, I want this community to be better. And we have to start now. I told Tuck Tucker, a longtime friend, I said, "We have the opportunity tonight to talk about, to set the foundation and set the grounds with an open, clear palette, with a full bucket of paints to paint that palette and that picture." We know there's challenges in this community, but our challenges are only as a challenge if we allow them to be a challenge. We want to hear tonight from you, the community, but what we also want to do is also share what we believe. It's not just about retail. It's not just about office. It's not about multifamily. It's about what's a combination that makes it work within the city of Roswell. We have a population of 94,000 people. We're 44 square miles of city. We're a big populace, seventh largest city in the state. Our role is we connect with the Georgia Department of Economic Development, Georgia Powell, and relocators every day, on the commercial side and the residential side, to bring good residents to Roswell, like my parents did in 1976, to come to the east side of Roswell when there were three stop signs, a Magic Market, and a 7-Eleven. And that's all we had, guys. And that was a big deal. And when we moved here, our house wasn't complete. We lived in Grand Creek Apartments in the Northwest Quadrant, which we'll talk about again tonight. Built in the late 60s, that apartment complex is still operational. It's still there, and it's making a profit. We need to look at what that is. How do we solve? We can't just uproot those apartments because in the day when we moved here, that was an important part. It was important to us. Our house wasn't complete in Tyson Circle, and it was going to be nine months before it was. I'm a JCPenney brat. I got to go all over the country, but I ended up here growing up. Why? Because when we came to Atlanta, my aunt lived in Dunwoody. She said, "There's two places you want to live, either in Dunwoody or Roswell." And Roswell's where we picked. So I'm proud of my roots here in this city, and I'm proud that I've been able to raise three daughters within the city of Roswell. What my goal is, is to make this a better place for my 21-year-old to come back to and live and have an opportunity to have a job. Friday, Thursday, I'll back up, Thursday, 1,400 jobs were announced in Alpharetta by a really great company called Jackson Healthcare. Well, you know what that does for all of us? It increases our property values. It gives good jobs to the Avalon area, but it also gives people an opportunity to come to spend money in Roswell, whether it's on Canton Street or it's a foundation social leader. It gives that opportunity. So we continue to try to work on those nodes within our city that'll bring strength to economic development, whether it's the car dealers or the 218-bed hospital that communities fight to have a hospital. And we have a new one, by the way. If you haven't heard, Wellstar put $14.5 million into that hospital since April 1, and we have 40 new physicians that have signed up and moved to Roswell since April 1, 2016. Why? Because we've got a strong healthcare system. It's only going to get stronger. So tonight, we want to talk about the Hoken Bridge corridor. We want to talk about what the citizens of Roswell want to see from Highway 9 to the Gwinnett County line. How do we bring in the right opportunities for Roswell to prosper within that corridor? How do we reach out to the Northwest Quadrant that includes the old Grand Creek Apartments? How do we make that a better place? How do we reduce crime but increase your tax base so that your home in Martin's Landing or Horseshoe Bend continues to appreciate? It's going to take a concentrated effort, and it's going to take feedback of what you will allow in your community. Because, folks, there are good developers out there that want to come here, and there's bad developers. But we, for 45 years, have said, "Close the door to development." We're not in a development mode. We're in a redevelopment mode. That, again, is what I emphasize. It's called redevelopment. And what does that shape look like? It's not just retail. It's retail and commercial. Commercial means office. What does office mean? It means the opportunity for Tuck Tucker's son to leave Martin's Landing and go across the street to his office and then turn around and go to the bagel shop in the area below his office and spend money, or go to the grocery store across the street and cut that commute down so his quality of life is better and so that tax base stays here and that workforce stays here in Roswell and doesn't go to North Cross, Alpharetta. So it's very important that we talk about what that looks like. So Roswell Inc., every day, we work in that public-private sector to try to bring those right kind of jobs. In October, we had a company called Delive move from California. Many of you are going to laugh, but thank you, Jerry Brown, for creating the environment in California that's not business-friendly. Don't care what your political view is, but it's important to know. They relocated here because all of the ingredients are here to make that work. Delive is part of that new retail strategy. Do you know, I don't know about you, but I was talking to Tuck earlier. My staff and I both agree, this right here, that's retail. That company called Delive is bringing 40 employees here that make over $100,000 each that's housed in Hoken Woods. They're part of this technology. This technology that allows us to go online and go to the loft and order our blouse, ladies? I've got three females in my house, remember? That blouse and those slacks and have them delivered from the loft the same day. That's the new retail. That's some of the reality we're faced with. So those are the issues that are some of the things that we face in our environment in Roswell. What are those unique opportunities to bring the right kind of retail, if it's retail, or the right kind of business like Delive to fill Hoken Woods? Anybody driven by Hoken Woods any day during the day? You can see that it's full. Our occupancy rates run at 94% throughout the city. That's strong. We need office. I just pulled some stats. It's very important. Class A office space in the city of Roswell, right now, I can put two spots together for 21,000 square feet. That's a good problem to have. That means we've got jobs here, but we also have retail that's empty because we've got bleed. And we have to look at what that means, bleed. Bleed means they're going to other areas to shop. How many people from Willow Springs leave Willow Springs and go to North Point Parkway and shop on North Point Parkway? How many people leave Horseshoe Bend to go to the Forum and shop? And then when you look at the statistics of where we are, east and west, where are we? What's the differences? We know the center of town with our strategic economic development plan in 2010 clearly defined, one of the key areas with 60,000 cars a day at Hoken Bridge Road and Highway 9 is an ideal spot for retail. We've got a full shopping center at Town Center, but we've got empty spots in other parts of the city. We overbuilt in the 80s. That's what happened. We overbuilt in the 90s on the retail. Any of you ladies ever heard of a place called Talbot's? Yes. We had the number three store in the nation on Hoken Bridge Road in this very corridor we're talking about, the number three sales Talbot's in the nation. And in 1995 to 98, when the avenue was built in East Cobb, a Talbot showed up. When the mall was constructed, a Talbot showed up. Our number three store left Roswell. Why? Because light businesses surround themselves with light businesses. We didn't have the appeal, so the loft went to the avenues and it went to the mall. So we have to look at it now. That was then. This is now. How do we approach it? How do we address it? We've got to know what you, the people, want in your community and what will be allowed because the development community's out there to come in and redevelop, not develop, but redevelop these very properties we're talking about. But it's got to be economically feasible, and it's got to be dual. Traffic is not going to change. Traffic's going to continue to get worse. If you just stop the traffic, stop the building in Roswell today, don't issue Allison Wakefield, do not issue another certificate of occupancy in the city of Roswell, our traffic is going to melt. Why? Because our neighbors to the north and to the east and to the west are building rapidly. And reality is, we're on a cross trench. Our area is set up so that we go to 400. So let's figure out ways we can keep people here so our own residents can benefit and prosper and so that we work in our own community. That's a key part, that we work, we live, and we play. Roswell, two weeks ago, was awarded the best live-work-play in the whole metro area. That's a big acknowledgement, but we can be better. 94% is not good enough. We need to be full, but we also need to be in the right kind of mix. So it's important tonight to hear from you and hear from what you want and what we need. We know it's a combination, and it's going to take a professional, overall, comprehensive plan, and it's going to take work. We do a lot of study in this city. The one thing I do here on a regular basis from developers is you're still a very desirable place. We don't want to fight the neighbors. We're not here to fight the neighbors, but we can come together and find the right developers to redevelop these properties we're talking about. Northwest Quadrant, full of apartments, multifamily. 1970s, style garden apartments. Those aren't going to go away. They're not owned by slum lords. They're owned by corporations or REITs, and they're profitable. We know that. So we have to find ways to work within that, to redevelop those properties. That's long-term. But what can we do with the shopping centers that are empty? We have to have, as I always say, we have to have a willing seller, a willing buyer, and a willing redevelopment. If you don't have that combination, it doesn't happen. So we're here to work on that and what that looks like with you, the community, because Hoken Bridge Road is our front door. Redevelopment of Hoken Bridge Road is where the first spot that people see when they come to Roswell. We have one exit. How much we forget, we have one exit of 400, of, rather, that's four. It's important that that's our front door, and we need to continue to take care of our front door mat and paint our door and make it look acceptable. But how do we do that? How do we work together to make that an acceptable entryway for our city with the right kind of businesses? Because we do have businesses knocking at the door, looking at how we can relocate here, but we need space also. So that's part of that redevelopment plan. How do we do that? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Randy. Randy is Dave Schmidt with the Downtown Development Authority, and they've got some ideas and some thoughts, and then we're going to share with questions and answers.
Thanks, Dave. Great seeing you tonight. Can I, can you?
Yeah, it's on.
Did you hear me now? Is that better? Good. Thank you for the feedback. So I'm Randy Schultz. I'm the chairperson of the DDA, and much like what Steve said, we don't have, we didn't have here with magic bullets tonight that's going to solve problems. I knew this as a starting point in engaging the community and getting the thought process going about where we want to go in redeveloping shopping centers, not only in East Roswell, but we have them all throughout Roswell. They're on Hoken Bridge. They're up Highway 9. We've got a lot of work to do. But I want to step back for a minute and just talk about the DDA. And most people in this room don't know what the DDA is. It stands for the Downtown Development Authority. Downtown Development Authorities were created and authorized under Georgia law, and any city can have them. The city has asked to create them. And then the city appoints volunteers. Everyone on the DDA is a Roswell, either a Roswell resident or owns a business in Roswell. So they're connected to the community. And as volunteers, we serve on the DDA. We have a variety of backgrounds. I have a financial background. Dave Schmidt, who will speak later, has an engineering and a real estate background. Others have design backgrounds, engineering backgrounds. We interact with other DDA's across the city and across the state, and so we see a lot of ideas about what's happening in other communities that we can use here in Roswell and bring into the redevelopment-type activities that you, as the citizens, are going to have to decide where you want to go with those. But what DDA's are set up to do specifically is to work and to redevelop blighted areas, ground fields. So all of these shopping centers that are decaying and are declining, those are ground fields. Green fields are what Roswell used to be years and years ago when we had all these horse farms, and you had developers come out and build most of the subdivisions that all of us live in, except for me because I live in a townhouse on Canton Street, so I have to deal with all that traffic. So the DDA cannot, we don't come in and start development on behalf of anyone, city or developer. A developer has to come to us with an idea and say, "Look, we want to start developing, redeveloping the shopping center." And at that point, we can start to use our tools, which typically are tax abatements, to help them build out infrastructure. Infrastructure, you talk about parking, that's a hot topic in the downtown district on Canton Street. It could be stormwater retention. What we do is we use the increase in tax values to pay for bonds that go in and finance that infrastructure for a developer. That allows them to create a project that potentially has less density and may not, but it allows them some flexibility so that they can get an economic return and come in to redevelop a project. So we have to work hand-in-hand with the development community in order to achieve success, and that's what we're set up to do. Roswell's downtown development area is the largest in the state, by the way. It stretches from the rim of Highway 9 all the way to Sun Valley, and then it crosses over 400 or Hoken Bridge, sort of stops right there at Old Alabama where the shopping center is there. That's sort of our boundary lines where we can come in and use our tools. Unfortunately, that's not something that the mayor or the city council can change. They can't just decide to wake up one day and go, "Oh, let's expand this." That's something that's set by the state legislature. So given that the DDA can only use its tools within its defined boundaries, for lack of a better term, where we can facilitate conversations is around how do we start to build a consensus? Who are the key stakeholders? We have a lot of contacts and resources around the state, Georgia Tech, the Atlanta Regional Commission, that will facilitate. They will come into communities and say, "All right, what's your problem? What are you trying to do?" And let's start the dialogue about where we want to go. And so even though if you take East Roswell, I know there's been a lot of discussion about Target closing, that's sort of outside of our playpen because it's not in the DDA boundary lines. But we could come in and start to facilitate that conversation about where does the community want to go with this? What are developers going to expect? What are the trade-offs? What are the choices that you want to make? Because I can tell you with every development that will happen in this city or any other city, it's not going to be perfect. No one's going to get 100% of what they want. They're going to have to make choices. And so as you sit here and as you look into where we want to go with redeveloping Hoken Bridge and redevelopment in Roswell in general, you have to keep that frame of reference in mind, is the choice I'm making today, and let me in a better position or a worse position, and then how do I make that choice going forward? So just to summarize, you know, again, the DDA is not here, we're not the answers to everything, but we do have the resources, we do have the connectivity to start the dialogue and make sure that we bring the conversation to the next level so we can move it forward. I'm going to ask my colleague, Dave.
I want to interrupt just a minute, just to respond to a question I heard. What's the limit on where the DDA can work? We can expand that limit. It won't require permission from the legislature, but if we see community support, I believe we can get the legislative support to expand that territory and to extend the benefits of the Downtown Development Authority. Beyond that, that was not a, it was more of a, this is the largest in the state, and that was our first run at this thing. If there's a need for a Downtown Development Authority, we can either create another one or we can expand this one as long as we have the legislature's support. So don't, I think he probably told you where their limits are today. If there is a need and there's support, the council can request an expansion. And I don't want to start answering questions right now.
Simple question. What is the DDA boundary today?
Literally, I just described it as far as it relates to Roswell. It stops sort of south of Hoken Bridge and to the west of Old Alabama. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's not, let's let the first, get them everything out, and we're going to open up all these questions, but I know that was on everyone's mind, and I didn't want you all to sit there and stew over that question of, why couldn't it be expanded? It can be expanded, and we have to have legislative approval. And I don't know all the technicalities, but at the time, we drew a very large boundary, and if there's a need to request that and a desire to request that, I'm sure you can see the full support of the council and our legislative caucus, and we have a, we have great legislators, and I expect it's handled up. So we can talk about why it wasn't done all right, but we're trying to look forward here. What can we do?
And I think that's an important point of why we're having this conversation tonight because we need to understand what the limitations are today and where we can take this. So Dave, I'm going to ask you to come up and make a few comments.
Okay. Good evening, everybody. Don't get too caught up in what the DDA can do and what's and all that. I think the primary question is much more fundamental than that. I'm in the development business, so I've been creating places for my career. That's what I've done since I graduated from college. And the key components of creating places is understanding where we are now and what we want. So let me do a little primer kind of on maybe why we are where we are right now. How many lived here in Fulton County before you were part of the city of Roswell? Half or even thereabouts. And so when Fulton County was zoned, it was zoned under a code whose basis was to put commercial around corridors and move residential off those corridors. And it was largely built on the idea that things that are different will be spread from each other. We're not going to put a house next to a grocery store because a dumpster is going to smell and make noise, right? Fundamentally. So things like buffers and, so what happens when that occurs? You have large areas of use that get defined, the shopping center, gas station, retail, commercial zones. Now we have a series of housing styles and choices, right? In our city, we've got the Rs and the Es and all that, so various lot sizes and so forth. That was the pattern of suburban development all across America. It was born about the idea that we separate uses for privacy concerns. It didn't allow for much connectivity because we're separating things apart. But it was born about the idea of making sure that uses didn't interfere with each other. They didn't make where we live loud and noisy, or they didn't make where we shopped encumbered by some residential and creating a noxious user effect for the residential area. That's how Fulton County was zoned. It was not zoned with the notion of a master plan, of a well-organized area, right? All of Fulton County was, I'm sorry. All of Fulton County, much like most of the county areas, were organized in search of large blocks of uses, right? So you can just run all the way down Hoken Bridge Road for the most part. There were a couple of zoning categories, and we built shopping centers and gas stations and lots, and behind that were our residential areas. So you start with understanding about that, you see all the assumptions about how we live, and we, I'm including myself, I'm a product of the boomers and the suburban era. We live a certain way that way. And guess what? The world is dramatically changing right now, especially accelerated as we came out of the recession. For those of us who are heading toward our retirement years, there's a core realism here. The core realism is that we're about as boomers and be replaced by a new generation that lives, works, and thinks entirely differently than we do. That changes the game. It also changes where investment falls. It follows where the money is. The money is the millennials coming in and their jobs, their style of use. An interesting thing happened the other day. I was just talking to a business owner, a fairly large insurance company, and they're a great example of what's going on. They had 20 people in their office. It's on, the office is on Hoken Bridge Road, and at the end of the month, they will be closing that office. Why? Because they're going to employ a hoteling concept. They'll build one office for all of North Fulton, and everybody will work out of their house. That's a pattern of living. It changes the way office operates in an empty space, and that space doesn't get replaced by somebody coming in because the new people coming in are working that way, too. So the reality is we have these trends, these macro trends that occur, and when we don't acknowledge them or we don't seek to understand them, the solutions we're all used to as boomers or the patterns that we've had over the suburban era don't fit as well as they used to, and so what happens? Shopping, for instance, retail, you know, the Target store. Why? Because they're going to employ a hoteling concept. They'll build one office for all of North Fulton, and everybody will work out of their house. That's a pattern of living. It changes the way office operates in an empty space. And that space doesn't get replaced by somebody coming in because the new people coming in are working that way too. So, the reality is we have these trends, these macro trends that occur, and when we don't acknowledge them or we don't seek to understand them, the solutions we're all used to as boomers, or the patterns that we've had over the suburban era, don't fit as well as they used to, and so what happens? Shopping, for instance, revamp. You know, the Target store lost money for five years in a row. It did well at one time, but two things happened. There was a lot of development around it. It was mentioned about the forum in North Point Law. Competition changed. People's patterns changed. They responded differently. And then you put the accelerator on, which is everybody in this room does it. We all shop for those things online, then we can easily do that, and we don't get in our car and go to the store. That has had a macro effect as not only we, the boomer generation, sort of latched on to it, but the millennials are coming at it from day one. And it's just large numbers of people are changing their habits and habits. So, the question becomes, what, how do we respond to that? How do we acknowledge the world as it's becoming, and we look at our physical ground, the way our layout is, and begin to adapt and change to it? And so, you know, I wouldn't want to leave this room and say there aren't solutions. There absolutely are solutions, but they're born out of a different way of thinking. And that's what's important message I would tell you that we have to acknowledge. Now, so you don't walk out of the room and say, "Well, what does that mean? What do I do?" There's a lot of people in my profession in business who are thinking, responding, and thinking about that. So, here's what I would tell you about my observations to the east side, and it's born because I work in town centers all across the state. I work in there because of three reasons, and all three of these boxes get checked every time we do a project. One is the community has well-defined what they want. Well-defined means in their codes, in their conditions, in their community support, it's well-defined, and we can read it, sense it, feel it. If we go to zonings, we know we're doing right or we know we're doing wrong, right? So, community is well-defined. Second thing, there is a market. There is a market. Any business, be it a development business or a UPS store, somebody needs to want to buy something there. They want to transact there. Business, from the marketing standpoint, there must be demand. And the third thing is economics count. None of us are going to invest anything that doesn't make money. And investors are cold and brutal about what they expect in returns, no different than we are in the investment we make in our retirement accounts and so forth. So, as we think about solutions, it's not two of the three boxes. It's all three boxes. We must define as a community. We must find solutions that are driven by demand, and we must also know that economics count, not only from the standpoint of the investment community that makes that happen, but we as the citizens in terms of tax base and services that have to be provided, and police and fire and all the kinds of things that have to work. So, when we think about solutions, those are important parts. Now, here's my suggestion as a way to sort of launch this. Mayor, I'll hand it over to you after this. I want to get the fire burning.
Each round serve a moderate.
So, my experience has been in places that are of high demand, these days, they tend about to be around areas of vibrancy. Vibrancy. The places we want to go because the experience is what we like. And I would tell you that vibrancy and the idea of retail has really gotten differentiated. And a quote I heard from an industrial developer hit me the other day, he just told me a couple days ago, and he says, "You know, industrial is the new retail. Industrial is the new retail." Why? Because we're all trying to redistribute products that we order online and get it there quicker, but we're not going to the stores as much. So, the idea about what retail means and those sorts of things is that retail can split into two categories. One, it can be utility-oriented, and that fits with the internet marketplace and us ordering something online and we get it. Or it must be experiential. We go to a place because we like being there. We're not necessarily going there to shop. We're going there to experience the sidewalk, and get an ice cream, and you know, that's essentially what Avalon was built on. The idea that you create a mix of uses, an interesting place, well-designed, whether you like Avalon or not, it is in fact a model that's being drawn to a large group of citizens. And we see that around town centers too. You know, downtown Roswell has a certain degree of vibrancy. Downtown Alpharetta, I mean, it's going on all over the state. There's this draw toward vibrant places that are a mix of different things happening, and we all sense it when we get in the street, go sidewalk, and we walk and go into a restaurant. It's a good feeling. It's a good feeling. The pedestrian experience is a great feeling in the core. So, here's my suggestion as we think about this. Where can a center of vibrancy exist in the east, in the corridor between 400 and Quinet County? And we have places, physical places. Maybe it's the Target Center, maybe it's around 400, maybe there's a couple of little areas in between. And can they in fact be well-defined by the community, check the marketing rocks, and make economic sense? To the degree a DDA can step in and help with some of the economics, that's some of our purpose. We help to sort of bridge that gap sometimes. But we may think about where are the places where that can happen, and what are we willing to do to accommodate that? In fact, I would challenge you as you think about this, if you were taking a different tact sometimes with how we think about our codes. Many times, we use our codes restricted. We don't want something to happen, so we restrict it to something that we want or will accept. I would suggest to you that if we can find the ability to check that community, market, and economics box, how can we create codes and conditions that actually encourage investment? It's a flip. It's a different way of thinking that says, "How do you make something happen, encourage something happen because we thought we'll be able to create that?" Now, there'd be a lot of passion on this with the UDC attempting to begin that discussion, right? It has, I was involved in that, and a lot of misunderstandings have been the source of a lot of angst, I know. But we, it creates, it creates some mechanisms in there, if well-organized, to apply to certain places that we might want to focus on. So, that might be a way to begin to think about, are there some stakes we can put in the ground in certain portions of the corridor between 400 and Quinet County and say, "We'll organize around that. We'll begin to think about what can work, what kind of mixes, what creates vibrancy, where would I go myself to spend time there and spend money there and so forth, and hopefully have others do that too?" You know, maybe some of that traffic that traveled on Holcomb Bridge might pull off. You know, spend time in a cool place, something that's got a lot of vibrancy. You know, right now, maybe they're just stopping by because they need to pick up milk or something else. It's not a big spend, and certainly wasn't enough to heat Target home, right? So, that may be a place to start, and the conversation might be is, "Well, what could that look like? What would I accept?" You know, and nothing comes with the, with the promise that there aren't going to be side effects to things. You know, there might be more traffic. Well, you know what? What if we created a place that's vibrant, increased more desirability of the people who live in their houses and their values go up, but we have to endure a little more traffic? That might be a good trade-off. You can aside that, right? So, that's the challenge that, as we think about it. I think macro, long-term, an interesting trend that is probably 20 years away, so for some of us, it'll just be a moot point, but for our children, you know, we'll be thinking about the lives they're going to be living here, is you think about how might we change our pattern of living? The notion of mixed use that, that you basically can live and work in a place and not get in a car, the idea that various forms of transit, not necessarily rail, but various ways of getting around are not worn around, clogging the roads like we did at 8:00 and 5:00 and school buses and so forth. There are different patterns of the way people, people live right now. I'll give you the best example because it's well misunderstood. The City Hall apartment project, which is the first one we've done in Roswell in-
Thirty, thirty years.
Thirty years, something like that. Was before 165 three-bedroom units, built in the 1980s. It was called Treasure Street Apartments, and it was largely for families. And so, there were lots and lots of children and lots of people that went to work today and came home at 5:00. So, you had a point in time that was really intense, and it clogged up the streets because guess what? We're all going out our front door at the same time. Today, that same project is twice as dense by the way we measure density. There are 320 units there, but there are studios, ones and twos. About the same number of bedrooms as they have before. The average age is 20 to 70. There's a high degree of people that don't work outside their apartment. So, guess what they do? They wait for the traffic to die down, they leave at 10:00, and they come on the floor. They observe in their lifestyle the fact that we have these peak conditions that we all hate because we don't want to hit the road at peak traffic hours, and so they wait. Their lifestyle accommodates that. Their choices of how they do business accommodate that. It's a different pattern of living. So, if you may get to think on a macro basis, how we might live together, how the next generation might live in a way that's different to the way we did, ate the pie, hit the roads at the same time and so forth, might that show up in a different way that our community develops? Now, the tough part about this is it's not snap your fingers and we got it figured out by next year, right? It's a long-term trend, and some of us may not get to enjoy the benefits of this. But if we're heading in the right direction, and we can make choices about the centers of vibrancy and the rules and regs we want around that, we can do that right now, and investment capital will clock to it. Because it's a strong, strong driver of economics and market, and if we meet community desire, then we've solved that problem. And so, and I would pretend that there's probably between, between Target, maybe 400, that might be some places, probably a few other spots that you know better than I do, but that might be those places in which we look from a regulatory standpoint, how do we encourage something we want that checks all three of those boxes? So, that's the thought I would give you, you know, as a developer, and what I would do and look at that sort of thing is to look at patterns, traffic flows, demographics. All those things are a bit of a science in terms of how you think about that, but still at the end of the day, it still has to speak to what do we want? What does the community want? And folks like our Alice and Transportation, and everybody can help sort of define that in a greater degree for, you know, in terms of helping us with codes and the like and such, but it still begs the question, you know, what is it we can do? So, the answer's not a simple one like add another lane on 400 or, you know, try and get a new retailer and move into Target. It's, it's a pretty low percentage that something like that's going to happen because it's happening all over. It's that we're not the only community that's faced with retail that's been taken. And the other problem that happens, and which we are experiencing, is you move from a Class A tenant to Target, and it gets filled because they're going to be at a $22 or $25 a foot rental rate, and you can't fill it, so what happens? You've got to drop it down to 18, and drop it down to 10. Guess who fills $10 rents? Probably not necessarily kind of folks who want in the community, but that's what. I may not check the community box, but it is checking the market and economic box, right? And it doesn't make us happy, right? So, so that's the idea going forward. So, I don't get in the middle of all the questions that I see them.
Let's open it up for questions.
I need a, I need a drink of water.
But I'd like to bring Alice Wakefield, head of our Community Development Department, up, and Steve Mason back from Transportation. And I'll be sitting up here. Hopefully, I don't get any questions, but I'll try to dodge them if I can. But these are the experts. I'm your elected representative, but I rely upon these experts for advice and ideas. But ultimately, it's trying to sense, to get a sense of what the community wants and try to respond to the community's wishes. We're not trying to impose anything upon you. We're trying to solve your problems and help you. So, let's see, we've got, let's get a couple of chairs up here. Steve, founder, facilitator, if you don't call on people, they'll get upset with you without me.
Any questions?
Yeah, let's do that. I think so everybody can hear.
Somebody in the city can roll a little bit.
Yeah.
Let's get, let's get someone to handle the roving light. Jerry Orleans.
Mike, yeah.
Mike, Steve. Mr. Assistant City Administrator.
Okay. Thank you. President of our department, I've been working on East Roswell for 40 years. I live in the Horseshoe Bend subdivision. I thought I was somewhat able to know you, but I did not realize that the Downtown Development Authority went to Old Alabama and stopped. That excludes Horseshoe Bend, that excludes Martin's Landing, that excludes a large portion of Roswell that I personally would like to see come into the Downtown Development Authority. I would like, I would like for us to have representation. I would like for them to listen to what we say in talking about these centers of operation. We need some. We've got a place. My wife, she jumped me big time. Target's closing, did you hear? Kohl's is gone. Target's closing. I said, "Well, honey, when I try to come home at night, I have to wade through the zoo of the boxes on our front porch." So, that's the way it's going. That's the way it's going. So, I am telling the mayor and everybody else concerned, I do have a certain, I've been downtown under the dome for 40 years. I will help in any way I can to get the attention of the Fulton County delegation, and if it takes legislation, we'll get some legislation to extend, extend that Downtown Development Authority to include everything to the Bunet, Cameron, and White.
The Development Authority-
Alice, first introduce yourself.
My name is Alice Wakefield. I'm Community Development Director. The Development, Development Authority, as was mentioned, is a state mandated program set up by the state with some specific regulations. The Downtown Development Authority is, the focus is the central business district and downtown, meaning commercial-like quarters. You do not, you can't put residential development in there because their focus is to promote jobs and to promote viable businesses. There are other tools that the city can utilize that would help with the residential, such as like Development Authority. The Development Authority can do larger projects. The city, the, the, the city can extend the Development Authority along the Holcomb Bridge corridor, but single-family homes is not something that the state traditionally allows you to put into the Development Authority.
I am not talking about single-family homes. I just meant the fact that we have large subdivisions over there. We've got shopping centers that are dying on the bank. That's what I'm talking about.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
I'm talking about Aqua Blue. I'm talking about, there's plenty of commercial over there to work, but you can't work on it if you only go to Old Alabama and stop there.
Let me clarify that. Aqua Blue is in the Downtown Development Authority.
Well, that's on the other side of Old Alabama.
Aqua Blue is in the Downtown Development Authority. When the city set up the Development Authority, the boundaries that were created matched the opportunity zone, and the opportunity zone-
You got it, you got it. We will do everything. There are regulations we have to comply with, and I wanted Alice to address this. But there is no, this council is willing, I will tell you, I will speak for my council members, they're, they want to do what, what it takes to make this area a success. So, we'll do whatever the regulations allow us to expand this district and get, to extend the benefits of this Development Authority all the way down the road.
All the way to that counter.
Subject to whatever rules and regulations the state makes us do, I am very supportive of that.
And if you need help, we'll form a delegation.
Our form delegation, we're fully in support of that.
Exactly.
So, that, I don't believe that's, it's an issue. We set this thing up looking at our, our, our opportunity zone, which did have other regulations, and it was very broadly drawn. The council didn't see a, a desire to expand it at the time, given the, the current mood of this audience, which I can, even I can understand. I don't see any reason, you know, I'm sure that we can expand that full extent of what this community wants, wishes to do.
We thank you, Mayor.
That's not going to be a problem.
Thank you.
I want everybody from the different neighborhoods to go ahead and raise your hand. I'll call out the neighborhoods.
Wait a minute, Lynn, let's just get questions.
Okay.
This isn't, this isn't a global round.
Thank you for coming to my show. Great. I'm going to ask a question. Maybe it's-
You can ask questions, but I don't want any polit, this is not by politics or anybody else's.
No, I am not. But I will tell you, I went to the George Department of Economic Development meeting last week, and we have something so special in Roswell that the rest of the state is very jealous of. Most of the state is Generica. That's generic America. Subdivisions, commercial, the same, same, same. What we have in Roswell is unique, and actually, if we build on what's unique about what we have here, we can go really much higher. And one of the things we have here is tourism, and yet we have the smallest convention of visitors per hour of all the surrounding areas. We also have the Chattahoochee River, which has more economic impact than the Atlantic Basin. But you didn't know that? We're sitting on a C and M sandwich over here. It's called water, and that's what makes people come here. And we have this wonderful river walk going on, and folks, people want to live and work in Florida where there's water close by. How many people like to fish? I know Dutch girls do.
Wait, wait, wait. We're talking about Holcomb Bridge right now.
I know you are, and that's what I'm bringing back to. Patience, patience. We have a lot of commercial stuff there, and people don't shop, but what do they want to do? I'm going to make the point- And people, believe me, there are opportunities like that that attract businesses around there that is exciting. You know, that's kind of what we want to do at night, too. We want a little nightlife around here, besides going to T.J.'s. And I'm, you're going to say that? So there are some opportunities to create some new system and opportunities that's not generic, not commercial. Maybe there's some ways to think out of the box. And then that whole idea of Main Street, you know, if you go on the other side on the track, there are shops and housing above.
Yeah, excuse me. My thought is that we should not be restricted by the Development Authority that's not at Old Alabama. So why could we not create our own additional Development Authority that goes all the way down here to Buonnet?
I think, I think, let me answer that from an economic development perspective. I think it can be easily done. I think that the thing that, when the Downtown Development Authority was created...
It's okay.
It can be done. It absolutely, it should be done.
State organization.
Yeah.
That's a restriction.
Continuous, yeah.
That's a restriction. But we all here have a concern about what's outside of that Development Authority. So why not create an authority for ourselves? What's so magic about that? Why not, we're concerned about what's going on. So could we not create our own Development Authority east of that Development Authority?
I'm not that smart enough to think of a bunch of things with all the empty boxes that we have around here. I'm sure there are some smart people who can do that. But like this lady over here said, if tourism is something that you want here, you've got some property that I talked to the mayor about a year ago at the, was the Rondo Leeds event, which is the Seven Branches Valley, which can be turned into another tourist attraction down by the river. At that time, you said you were close to doing something with that. So my question is, where are we, where is that?
Our city attorney is negotiating with the property owners to purchase that property.
So it's close to happen?
The council is supportive of creating a passage park and a trail on that system. In negotiating, if you are too anxious to strike a deal, you don't strike as good a deal. This council is supportive. We're negotiating with the property owner. That is moving forward. There are no other purchasers that are threatening to buy from us. I have every expectation of the city acquiring a passive park and trail. But be patient with us, we're trying to get the best price.
What's your timeframe? What do you think?
Before somebody else does something. Right now, that property is in a perfect state. It is undeveloped, it is green space. Before anybody else gets there, we're going to acquire that property. Now, if you give, it's like asking, "Bush, when are you going to get out of Iran?" If I give you a date that it will be acquired by, then you limit my negotiating. I'm trying to strike the best deal and get the best price for that piece of property. And it's an active negotiation, and that's all I can tell you.
Is that all 53 acres, sir?
All I can tell you is we are actively negotiating purchase of land for passive park and a trail. That's all I can tell you.
Do you have a question?
Go ahead.
Hi, Judy Smith. I am new to Atlanta and Georgia. My husband and I decided we didn't want to show the snow in here. We've been roaming around the South. We bought where we're at at Eland Hall. I feel so separated from Roswell. I tell everybody I live in Rosarreta. Because I live in the Roswell city limits, but my address says I live in Alpharetta. I feel a little estranged. I live right next to where the Target just closed. What can I do? I am willing to volunteer. I sit on our HOA board, I'm the Secretary of the HOA board. What can I do to help the situation? Answer me that.
I'm going to throw out a suggestion. Because one of the, one of the things we announced Friday at a meeting with Economic Development, the Commissioner of Economic Development, many of the leaders, the delegation from Fulton County, that is a comprehensive plan, what that looks like. But I think we have to take it one step further. And I'm not talking for the mayor and the council, I'm talking for the private side. I think that we have to hire the professionals at ARC, or we have to bring in folks from Georgia Tech. Because Dave mentioned the economics. It's more than just economics. We need to do charrettes. So I would welcome your volunteerism. Because we're going to need HOAs to be a part of these charrettes, to be able to clearly define what the community is going to accept and going to want. So I'm with you.
Where can I go to find out that information?
What's that?
Where can I go to find out that information?
Well, part of what we're doing tonight is kicking off of that. Part of what we're doing tonight is kicking that off, so that we can gather more information, so that we can do that and go back to mayor and council and say, "We need to hire these folks. We need to put them in place so that we can create a charrette, create an environment that we clearly understand what the people want."
Can you give me a name? A website?
I'm going to give you my business card.
I will take your business card.
You got it. It's got my cell on, please go. Go ahead.
Okay. My name is Rochelle Muka. I am a resident of River Terrace on the Peaks Road. I've been living here for 20 years. I've also been a president of my neighborhood twice. And I've also spent the last four plus years as a quintessential volunteer for the city of Roswell. So I've got to know the city a little better inside and out. My question is, is that, all of you were speaking before about the wants of the community, what the community wants. And I would like for you to address a little bit more about what the community needs from an economic revenue perspective. It is data proof that the city of Alpharetta collects about 60% of their property taxes from commercial and the rest from residential. That Sandy Springs is about 40% and 50 or so, 55. And that the city of Roswell has about 28% that comes from commercial property tax and the rest coming from homeowners. It seems to be an unsustainable equation. So I'd like for you to address not just what we want to see in the city on the east side, or the west side, or the north side, or the south side, but what as a city do we need to consider to be economically viable in the future?
Let me respond to this question. Every city is different. Roswell's strength is in its residential neighborhoods, not in its commercial districts. My primary goal, and the primary goal of this council is to keep strong neighborhoods and strong property values. We're not here to raise revenues. We're here to create strong communities. And the fact that Roswell, that Alpharetta has a lot more commercial property means they have a lot more property along 400. So if we're trying to compete with them and trying to equalize their tax base, that's the wrong goal. The wrong goal is strong communities and keeping those neighborhoods strong. Our concern is, is that with the waning retail demand and empty shopping centers, it has an influence on your neighborhoods. And we're trying to strengthen that. But my goal is not to raise our revenues, not to bring more commercial in, but to create a community with businesses that support the residential neighborhoods. Because I believe the strength in Roswell is not our businesses, they're part of this community, but the citizens and the, and our residential neighborhoods. So that's my priority, and I believe that would be true of all the councils. So I have a different perspective. Yes, it would be wonderful to have the tax base of Alpharetta and Sandy Springs, but I would much rather live in the city of Roswell than either Alpharetta or Sandy Springs.
I have a question, same vein. All across the country, their cities and states are experiencing budget shortfalls. Roswell is beautiful. There is a value proposition to that. My question is, have, do you have a plan to not give away the whole house? You know, yeah, okay, you don't, you don't want to put a whole lot of commercial areas and pack things in, I get that. Don't give away the whole house. When you give away these tax incentives, first question, when you give away these tax incentives, is there a condition that's connected to, this is you, sir, is there a condition connected to the long-term understanding of what value they're bringing? You know, so that they need to know they need to stay for 20 years, or if they don't, if they back up in five years, then they need to give us our money back? You know, so that, I want to know if there's a connection to that? Do we look, do we look into long-term and is it tied to the contracts that we give? First question. Second question. Vibrance, it's beautiful. I mean, I don't know if you guys have looked at it. We, we have something to offer. There is something to offer. And it's more than just tax incentives. These guys want us. They want us, right? You know, look at Hulken Bridge. It's beautiful. And, and, okay, you have, you have, yeah, you have, you have, yes, you have people that are dropping, businesses that are dropping off. But we need, this is the second question. I need to know, do you guys have a plan for convince, giving a value proposition that's other than tax incentive? That lets them know what, what the value is of being around the tax base that's here? You know, the, the people that will, will, will want to come after they have...
We need to bring a mic back up to the front. I don't think I can yell out enough for you. Thanks. All right, so tax incentives. The Downtown Development Authority's not been around very long. We've only been about five years down. So we have yet to issue a tax incentive. It's not been one happened in Roswell yet. It may happen in some of the projects we do, but it must pass a test first for us to apply an incentive, and that is a very extensive, it's called a BUT-4 test. BUT-4 the incentive, the project is not economically viable. That's not a simple little one-pager. It's pretty detailed. It looks at market, it looks at demand, it's all validated, all these things. So when a development authority says we're going to abate some taxes, there is a rigorous test that must be passed to grant that abate. That'd be ideal for you.
Same thing with the bond, too, right?
Sure. Any public incentive has to, has to pass the BUT-4 test, right? And so, now that can turn into any variety of things that come out the back end from the standpoint of increased taxes. A property used to pay X, now it pays three times X, right? Or there are jobs created. Or there's a, something, a park that's created. Or the project creates a parking debt. And there's all kinds of different ways that can show up that, you know, we use our creativity to try and think through how that is. But it still must pass that test. So vibrancy...
So, but is there a connection to how long they must stay? If they leave after 20 years, then they got to give us our money back?
Well, it's not, not they leave. It's tied to the property and tied to the outcome of the economics. So you're talking about clawback, a term clawback, which means we put in the regulation or the granting some way to pull it back. So typically, that's not the case. But the rigorous study looks to prove that in the subject incentive is grounded in reality.
And there's one other thing. Typically, these bonds have a limit on them. 10 years, 20 years. And at the end of that period, then that tax base jumps up to the new value. So we, as citizens, then begin to reap that benefit because we've already paid for that parking debt. And so then, that tax base will go up three, four, or five times at that point. So it's not about them reimbursing us at that point. We're going to, as a community, be getting those back at a higher tax base.
So you're saying they will still be able to leave? If they decide to leave in six years, they can go and leave an empty box and we would pay for it there? You're saying we have no, we have no protection against it?
Well, it is a, it's an economic development choice that we make to invest in something. There are no guarantees in investment, but we look and go through this rigorous process to say, did we check the three boxes, right? We've got something the community wanted, the market demand is proven, and the economics show itself to bore out that an incentive is worth investing in. And we're a public body, so we make those choices in a public forum. And we haven't made any yet because we're trying to get to a front, but that's the case.
And the vibrancy issue you were about to say?
Refrain the question for me again.
Are we going to sell more than just the tax incentive? Are we also going to sell the value proposition of living around a certain income level of...
So let me answer that in terms of, we got hung up on development authority incentives, and I would tell you that's the tail wag of the dog. Okay, we'll come later and help out. But the core of something is it's economically viable. It works, it meets the need. You know, if it needs a little help, we can help it. We're not, we're not a magic bullet that all of a sudden makes it happen, you know, without any cost to investors or developers. We've got to be rooted in good, sound planning, market use and so forth. And we can facilitate that discussion, and if we think we need to help in a little, we'll weigh in. If not, we'll just help them get through and they do it on their own. And so we don't work by that sense.
One of the things that I was most concerned about is the consideration that's given to connectivity in our community. Right outside this window, we've got that new, the new entrance to East Roswell Park. And it's one of these things that you look at and go, "Duh, why wasn't this done 20 years ago?" You know, it was just absolute no-brainer. What are you guys doing as far as looking at development plans, looking at connectivity? I know, how many months, years did you guys spend discussing the allowing golf carts, you know, to be in Roswell? It's a kind of a useless ordinance because we don't have connectivity. We've got thousands of Roswell residents that live right there in all the apartments right there at Hulken Bridge. They don't even have access, a walkable safe path to access the Roswell Riverfront from Hulken Bridge. I mean, that's a quarter mile that we could put as paths that so that people have access.
Yeah, let me, I want to make a comment before I begin the interview. You mentioned 20 years ago, why didn't we do that? Because that wasn't acceptable level of the way we were going to develop those communities. We were born on the cul-de-sac. We were born on connectivity creates potential for invasion, crime, any number of things that communities think. The boomer is coming up with a suburban development pattern greatly valued privacy.
Well, the millennials also are not afraid of murder and mass transit. I hope that is something...
And I, yeah, I served that market and recognized, you asked why it didn't happen 20 years ago? Because that was the pattern of the way we operated and so forth. The question now is, what can we do in the next 20 years? And the answer's right here.
This is, I'm going to do a couple of things. First of all, I'm going to say thank you for asking that question. I'm going to give you my business card. Because I can tell you that the transportation staff rigorously reviews development plans for connectivity. And many times, we get creamed by them that they don't want this connectivity. We insist on two points of connection. We insist on multi-use trails to enable golf carts. I can tell you, it's a rigorous process that we go through, but we don't always win. Okay? So there's probably two flavors to this. There's retrofitting the existing situation that we have, which is, as Dave mentioned, we have a third of our streets ending cul-de-sacs. And that's just the way we are. You know, good, bad, or indifferent, that's the way Roswell developed. We look for opportunities to connect. They're out there, some are easy, some are hard, most are hard. But for the new developments coming in, it is absolutely a standard, and the mayor and the city council have required us to explore those options, and we do. So without taking any more time from economics, I can tell you, connectivity is what we live and breathe.
Before I go any further, I want to introduce Councilmember Don Horton. Raise your hand, Don. He's not on the podium, he would like to be. And he, I hope you can talk to him after the meeting, and his phone number is available. And Jerry Orlands, just as I announced him, walked out of the room. And he'll walk, "Jerry Orlands, come back in."
He's coming.
He was here before I was. So raise your hand, Jerry. We're here to listen to you. They're not on the podium, but they are here to listen to you.
Our family moved here from Houston in June of 1981. We lived off Old Alabama Road. We raised our two sons there. Once they went off to college, we thought, well, we can live anywhere we want to live now. Because my husband's in commercial property insurance and he's pretty well knowledgeable. But we realized that we wanted to stay in Roswell. But we realized that we wanted to stay in Roswell because of the quality of life here. And I think, I was very heartened to hear our mayor talk about how we need to start, or we need to remember that what made Roswell so attractive to families such as ours is that it is a community, it's not a bedroom suburb. And I think there's money to be made. I don't think development needs to be restricted just to office buildings and strip shopping centers. One of the things that sold us on Roswell before we actually found a place to build a house was your parks and, our Parks and Recreation Program. Blew me out of the war. We had a one-year-old and a four-year-old while we were house hunting. And here's this cradle-to-tomb recreation program. What that tells me is that there's money to be made, both as the boomers who moved here back in nineteen eighty-one, uh, look to see how we wanna recreate ourselves, redefine ourselves. And Roswell once again has taken, redefined what a senior center looks like. But there's no reason why private enterprise cannot be encouraged to look at Roswell from that same point of view. And in private, um, I, I don't know how well Skyzone is doing because I just had two B replacements, but.
Very well.
It, and Skyzone's doing okay.
It's doing great.
Okay, so there, there you go.
And that's a success, I didn't mean to cut you off, but that's a, that's a local Roswell success.
Right.
We brought that, that company here, Skyzone. That, that family literally moved from Norcross to Roswell because of two things. The schools, the places of worship, and our parks. And the owner now has five in the metro area. And that is a success story because it's quality life.
So, then there's a possibility of, uh, having private enterprise design, uh, skateboarding parks. You know, um, there's, uh, encouraging people to, uh, open private art schools or music schools for boomers who wanna learn. I, you know, they, they always wonder what if we liked to play the flute, you know, when they were growing up. I actually know a doctor started studying the flute. If we can start thinking in terms of making money off of things that are experiential, quality of life, making it worthwhile to stay in Roswell, not have to leave because the kids are gone, that's another source of income stream. And it's worth it to keep our quality of life.
Hi, I'm Jeremiah Ronchild. I've lived in Horseshoe Bend for five years now with my wife and daughter. Can you hear me?
There you go.
Alright. So, I'm Jeremiah Ronchild. I've lived in Horseshoe Bend for five years with my wife and daughter. And one of my concerns is we see a lot of people retiring. They move out. And we hear from a lot of people, well, Horseshoe Bend is nice, but as soon as you pull out of the subdivision and you're on Hulken Bridge, it's nicer. You go up and down, and it's nicer. And the challenge that we have is there are folks that say, you know, there are folks that should come in, there are businesses that wanna come in, but they're looking at what their neighbor is, what the store is to the left and to the right, whether it's occupied or not, and what that vision is. And so, when you look at Target, because I think that's on a lot of people's mind here, what's gonna come there? You have Marshalls, you have the S W U. Uh, the anchor is gone. And if you look at Marshalls, the, and it's a great store. I would bet many of the people here, and I'm not asking to take a poll, if folks are gonna go to Marshalls, they are more likely than not, even if they live in Horseshoe Bend or one of the other neighborhoodhoods in close proximity, to go up to North Point to go shopping there when it makes no sense BUT-4 the fact that it's all proxim, proximity and vibrance. And so, I think there's a lot of people here that would, I certainly can speak for myself, my family, that if we had a forum or a mini Avalon where the Target is, there would be a lot of smiles in this room because it would be bringing vibrancy back. It would also attract folks that when they're looking at this area, and then they go west of four hundred to Crab Apple and the other areas, they're making a trade-off decision. What is near me? I'm probably one of the younger folks in the room. But as an executive of a large company, what I would say is, we're busy, we're always on, we have a lot going on. And when you bring in something like a Target or something to replace a Target that is a consumables model, that's a problem. Because you go to, onto Amazon or somewhere else to buy that. You need something that brings people that they wanna go downstairs. Arlington, Virginia's a good model. If you look there, Clarendon area, where you look at, they have nice upscale apartments and condos. And folks go downstairs and they shop and they eat and they live. And it's a very nice model. Another model to take a look at is you look at the old Lomen Plaza area by North Druid Hills. It was not very well maintained. It was quite run down. But you look at now, Brighton Park, the new name, and how it's been revitalized with the fresh market there. It's a substantially better way of do it, doing things. And I think there's a lot of value in that. So, if you think about, and my, my perspective is less about a question, but if you think about what the younger generation coming in, my concern is if five years from now, after my daughter graduates from River East, do we move out to Alpharetta or do we move somewhere else? What is that there that will keep us here longer term? As the older people that are in the neighborhoods move out and you have other people in, what is going to keep us here? And it's gonna be revitalizing shopping. So, I would suggest, while it takes time, make sure whoever fills that spot at Target is part of a broader vision of what that looks like. And it's not about just getting a few bucks in the door to fill a spot that's gonna turn over two or three years from now. We're gonna continue bringing in that low-end tenant that we don't want or chucking things up in a way that doesn't make sense that supports growing the community and the property values.
Hi, I'm Lisa. We've just lived here for a year, so I'm very new. And I just have a question. Kind of to be back to what he was just saying. I've heard three associations or committees or whatever they're called. Um, and I'm curious, because you were talking about having things together and making communities where people live, shop, experience. How do those committees or organizations work together to make that a reality?
Great question. So, one of those, one of, one of the answers to that is truly where we take that opportunity to work with, whether it's the Downtown Development Authority or it's the State Economic Development Department. And how do we create that sense of community? I, I share your, applaud your, your comments about where do we go? Because one of the key things is, is that the city of Roswell's aging in place. I don't know about you, but I got a little gray hair. And guess what? My, my parents are still here from nineteen seventy-six. It's a great thing. Why? Because we don't wanna leave. And when you look at the statistics right now, to answer your question, I'm gonna tie right back into yours. You look at CityWalk, that first multifamily in thirty years? When Lenar thought it was gonna be all about millennials? Do you know who's, who lives there? My neighbor, that's sixty-two. Because they sold their house next to me in the cul-de-sac. It's the other group that lived in Brookfield. They decided they didn't wanna live in Brookfield anymore, but they can't decide whether they're gonna build on Providence or they're gonna live in another rockable area. So, what we're seeing is a redevelopment of that thought process, as Dave said. So, to partner, we have to partner with the Downtown Development Authority. We have to partner with the Chamber. We have to partner with CID, which creates a community that has active transportation. And then we have to have, one of the key things is find the right investors that will invest. But more important than all of that is what you, the people, will allow. What we will allow as residents of Roswell. So, that's where we are on that. And I think the collaboration is strong, stronger than it's ever been within the city as far as reaching out to all the entities that we have. You know, one of the things we could look at very easily now that Target is gone? Because, folks, I don't know if you know this, but they own that building. Target may have decided financially, they don't share those with the city. Their financials on each and every store. So, there's no way that anybody could anticipate them closing that store. Does it make sense? We talked about this. Yes, there's a lot of reasons it makes sense. But on paper, it also doesn't make sense. So, when you look at the demographics between east and west, it's very important to notice that some reason people didn't shop there. We all might've been there five times a week, but somebody didn't shop there because it wasn't viable. So, now we have a big box. We don't want a C-level tenant. Goodwill would love to have a space like that. Is that what we want? No. So, we've got to know, and we've got to work together to know what we can accept. And there's nothing wrong with goodwill. It's a good, uh, corporate system in metro Atlanta. But what we've gotta do is be able to create that entity, whether it's tax incentives, job creation, restaurants. But it's gotta be allowed walkable communities. And that's something we've been really resistant in Roswell. And I'm not here tonight to say we need to build multifamily on the east side of four hundred. But what I am saying is we need a comprehensive plan on commercial. Because when we're running at ninety-two to ninety-three, ninety-four percent occupancy rates on office, we don't have any, any extra office to have for you to, to go to your office across the street or a half a mile down the street. So, we need to look at what that mix is because office feeds retail. We see it. We see it in the perimeter area. We see it at North Point. We see it at Avalon. So, we need to look at what that mix is. And I'm not saying we need a corporate campus. I'm saying small office, forty-five thousand square feet, that's the request we get. Dave talked about the fact that the new generation in IBM's, I don't know, when I moved to Roswell, half of Martin's Lane, it was IBM. Half of Martin's Lane. And guess, and Kimberly Clark. But guess what? IBM for years, for the last ten years, have had people work from their homes. They figured it out. That's what's happening in the new generation. But corporate America still needs a place to go. So, why not take advantage of that and try to find that and keep those people, those C-class? One of the things around the state that I hear on a constant basis is what Lynn said about the quality of life, what the mayor said, what many of you said about the quality of life in Roswell. Part of that is because we are, become a C-level bedroom community. When Mercedes landed in Sandy Springs, it was a win for the real estate market in the city of Roswell. Because why? The demand for homes were great. Why? Because we got good parks, we got good school systems, we got good place to live. So, when a regional hub comes like that, those don't happen all the time. When GM landed here in Roswell with sixteen hundred jobs that are all IT, that was a strong land in the city of Roswell to increase our tax base. So, the partnerships are very strong right now, and they're getting stronger. But as we need, we find needs and we meet these challenges that we're gonna be faced with, whether it's in East Roswell or it's at the Hulken Bridge and Highway Nine corridor, we've gotta be able to know what the people will accept. And some of that mix may be something we're not comfortable with from the past.
Dave, you have a question up here?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I've been coming to these meetings since we moved here in two thousand and four. I've been coming to these meetings since we moved here in two thousand and four. And literally, I've watched businesses drop off, left and married, different shopping centers since I moved here. Literally, my husband's like, hey, cheeseburger, cheeseburger, you're further the crupper. We moved here and we later was gone. My husband's like, well, I mean, we, we only lived here a week, it's already gone. But my question is, so, we put up things on the east side of Roswell, like, I don't know, the most haphazard, well, again, I, I sat through a thousand of these meetings. U D C, this is what we watch. So, we're gonna put a grocery store next to a grocery store with this, now a gas station right next to a gas station, with two big boxes that are just empty. And all of that through the city was like, oh, that's a great idea. Like, my question is, we sat through all those U D C questions through those meetings and said, hey, we're okay with the issues. We'd like some development, we would like walkability. That was ten years ago. We didn't get any of that, but we got this brand new stuff that just pops up that has no connectivity to anything.
Thank you.
Can I just follow up on what you said? Um, because you mentioned aging in place, and that's, that's my area. Um, you need to also look at the A R C and the Aryan Agency. They created livable communities. Uh, they also had, I ran a law, Financial and Parental Retirement Initiative. One of the big issues among the elders is transportation. They have a great building showing the path counting. And that's one of the problems, was transportation, the timing of the lights on Hulken Bridge. But my question is, to be very brief, is that, um, the Arts Council did a fabulous, uh, survey that they sent out to residents, asking what they wanted to see in terms of culture and arts. It was a survey monkey. Is that something you can do with our community and our groups so we can each speak up about what we want in terms of the big boxes and get ideas out of the box? Because I think, I thought that was very useful, and I'd love to see that. I'm a foolie. Give me a cloak street market more than I'll be.
To answer your question, the answer is yes, but I think it did a lot more. This is the largest turnout I've seen for one of these meetings. I think there's a, there's a great, there's an interest higher now than ever before. There's a need that's, that's more apparent than ever before. We need a, I hate to say a study, but we need a dialogue. We need a discussion. We need community involvement. We need volunteers together. We need more of these discussions. Because the first thing we've got to decide is what is the, what does this community want? We're hearing a lot of opinions, and I, and I and the council will pledge you. This is the beginning and not the end of that discussion. We need to have intense discussions and hear from you and look at the alternatives. And it's not just asking questions, it's getting educated as to the opportunities and the options. And so, I see this as being an ongoing discussion, but not an ongoing discussion that goes on forever, an ongoing discussion that leads to a solution.
Hi, how are you this evening? So, I keep hearing the same things over and over. We don't have office space in Roswell because people want to be here. Part of that's probably because we're sort of stuck in the middle. Sandy Springs has all of these huge corporate, uh, headquarters. Alpharetta has all these huge corporate headquarters. Roswell is supporting those huge corporate headquarters with small business. You know what they say about people who do the same thing over and over, it's that needed to resolve? I think, I think it's sort of been proven over the years that people don't come to East Roswell to shop because we have access to North Point Parkway, we have access to the Forum, we have access to all those places. But if there is this great need for office space, why aren't we focusing on where the need is? Have you looked at communities, say, like Chattanooga? Chattanooga has a community Wi-Fi. Have we spoken to Google or AT&amp;T to see if we can get in Google Wi-Fi and actually make community Wi-Fi? So that anywhere we go in the city, if we are sitting here at Roswell City Parks, we can take out our devices and we can actually do business on those. And do that as a community to attract the millennials, to attract a small tech business. Georgia is the fifth most popular film industry spot in the United States right now. We are number five. What are we doing in the city of Roswell with our beautiful parks, our beautiful river, our historic homes to attract these film businesses? With all due respect, I don't think we need to be focusing on retail. I think we need to look where other business opportunities are because there's nothing wrong with having small office spaces to attract businesses here rather than look to big box stores or lots of retail.
Yeah, I'm here, uh, believing just like everyone else because I'm worried about East, East, uh, Roswell. And, uh, we want it to improve. We would like to have, uh, work, play, um, and live communities. And I think we had it at one time. We had Riverwalk Village come in and the community shot it down. And it seems like that's what we're trying to do again here, like the Target, turn that into a work, live, play community or something. Like Target, turn that into a work, live, play community or something. Why did we not keep Riverwalk Villages coming in? It's going to be tied into the Chattahoochee River. It was going to be beautiful. It was, it was going to put, not really put Roswell on the map. I just don't understand. My wife and I moved here six years ago and there was not much change in the community. And then all of a sudden, the Riverwalk Village came in. It's like, we landed our gold mine. And I would just like to know why that didn't happen and if anything like that could come back and be added.
Well, the political answer is it did not receive community support. Whatever we do in the city of Roswell, we look for community support. And that's what we're trying to build right now is a community consensus as to what this community wants to see. So we don't bring a Riverwalk, which folks are upset with. And we don't bring more retails. This, at the beginning of this conversation is to tell you some of the options, but really, it's really about finding what this community supports. And whatever that is, we want to carry out. There's some ideas. We're going to hear some more. But what it begins with, that first box is community support. We've got to have a vision that we share. And people, that is not easy to develop because there are lots of different opinions in this room. And we've got to look at the options and look at what's best for Roswell. And that will take some time to develop. But that's what we're working on today. That's what we're starting on today, developing a vision for this community that starts with you and not with me and not with the city, but with you. And what we're looking for is what your vision is. You've got one vision. There are a lot more visions. I'm looking for something everyone can support.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm Bill Beckerman. I live on River Lake Drive. Twice, you've been voted down on the Riverwalk property that I'm trying to, it's trying to be built. And that's very important. So I think it's, it's, we're shooting ourselves in the foot as a community and the people here and the community that don't want those things. But yet, they're the right things to be built at this time in our history. I am very much in favor of the type of development where you can live, work, and shop within walking distance. I think that's medicine for it.
Let me first, to clear the record, I did not vote for the second Riverwalk. I was open. I was looking at that. Council never took a vote. I, I did not support that because I didn't sense a community support. But this is what I support, folks. We need walkable communities. Walkable communities, not in a high density, but a walkable community means that someplace that you can live and you don't have to get in your car to go to the grocery store or get to a job or get to the beauty parlor. We've got, we need, my vision is that we need walkable communities and convert this Hulken Bridge corridor into walkable communities. Now, the tough part about that is that more than likely, that means some multifamily housing. It doesn't just mean offices. It doesn't just mean retail. I think it means a mix. And we're seeing, does the community support that? At what level does they support that? Is that the direction you want to go in? If you want to ask me, I think the biggest demand in Roswell for housing is around Canton Street. Not because you can get drunk and walk home. And I don't do that. Two beers is all I can handle. But because there's a vibrancy in the community and that you can walk to places and that people feel that they don't have to have a car to get anywhere they want to go. We've got to create that kind of a neighborhood, in my mind, throughout these commercial corridors, wherever they are. So I believe in walkable communities. But we've got to say, what does that really mean for you? Because you have to make that decision, what you support. That's the first step. And you've also got to say, is there demand? Well, there is a demand for walkable communities. But at what level? And, and, but the biggest question in these walkable communities is the economics of this, that box. I'm not, I want to see at what level this community supports a walkable community? What does that really mean for you? I believe there's a strong demand. And then that has to match up with the marketability. So these are all possibilities.
Good evening. Selena's a pot that here. Dave made a really interesting point earlier about where we are now. And I think it's important to point out that the East Village, where Super Target is, was actually advertised as Roswell's first mixed-use community. If you look on the, and obviously, that business model failed miserably. It's been, what, eight years? And those townhomes are not finished yet. As we all said and we know, the Super Target is closed. We've got retail space in there that has not had one tenant. But that was supposed to be a Main Street feel, the whole walkability thing. And that's been an absolute disaster. I want to know what we've learned from that, Dave.
I don't have to respond to the DDA. I don't, you know, I'm not the expert in what I've learned. And maybe somebody in the DDA has to. Because these are the developments. Not me.
I lost the microphone. I'll try, I'll try to speak louder. So I'm glad to hear that people have repeated the word vibrancy a few times, right? It's one of the things that drives my business. I try and find the kinds of things that create interactions with people. One of the things that's important about vibrancy is we need to have a density of people, right? That site's not very dense with people. A few townhomes does not constitute dense people. The, the successful models around mixed-use development that emerge observe the 18-hour day. From 6:00 in the morning, when we might go get breakfast, to midnight at night, where we might have activities that happen, we fill that time with things that work with each other to make sure it's active for 18 hours. That's a key part of what I look at when I make the investment into these mixed environments to see how to do that. The model of a Target does not beat that model. It is very low-density people-wise. Now, one of the challenges is, we as Roswellians don't accept this very easily, is apartments create lots of people in one place. Well, all over means you walk out of there and you are, you are walkable to once around. So it may not be, that'll be a test. Is it dense enough? Is there enough people there? Are there the right mix of things in those places? I have to admit, I don't know that area well enough to tell you the detail of the conditions. But those are vibrancy tests. They're there for me, for me, would need to prove that. There's models that, they're there, it's not proof, okay? What I, here's the way I would answer it. I mean, hold on, here's the way I would answer it. Because I, I understand. I'm going to just look at what it takes to make the investment in a product that's going to create that vibrancy. And I have to look and see, I have to look and see, is it there? Something's not working. As, as you mentioned, it's not working, right? So what's not working? Is it, there's a reason why people don't go there because it probably had a heavier retail focus. But as you think about mixed use of the right model, there are different reasons emerging driven by different people having different cues in purpose.
My name is Big Father. I live in Montes. And my name is Big Father. I live in Montes Lane. I moved here three years ago for one reason, one reason. The quality of life. You had it before. You have it now. And if you work appropriately, you will have it in the future. The mayor has alluded to it. Several others have alluded to it. It is something we continually can work on. It is something we can do immediately. A gentleman up here alluded to the purchase of the Seven Branches property, the 55 acres, to improve connectivity within our park system. It's something we can move on immediately and serve one high school, three grade schools, a middle school, and a library and bring that in contact and bring those in contact with the river and move with the number. That is something we can do immediately. The other things we are working on are looking to the future. And we need to be very careful that we don't begin a new cycle of planned obsolescence. We don't get, we don't get turned on by the new shiny concrete and the concept du jour that will be obsolete in 10, 20 years. And let's hear a little bit more discussion about what can we do now at relatively low cost? And again, the Seven Branches project is, is, is one of those. That's my comment on this.
Hi, I'm Liz Delward. I've lived here for about 19 years. And unfortunately, East Roswell, we felt like we was in the stepchild. Today, I drove up 400 and I was getting off at our exit. Do we have at 7:00 a.m., we can go to Norcross if we go to the right or Roswell to the left? We're not even on the sign. We talk a lot about,
Just a quick announcement. That was a GDOT decision. We have been fighting that. And fortunately, Steve, go and tell them where that stands. That's a specific question.
It's going to change.
When? We finally got a commitment from GDOT to change it, but when is a different question.
I've seen the plans. And I don't mean to interrupt, but the, your message transmitted through the city to GDOT, the two signs will say Roswell as you're heading north up toward 400. The contractor's going to put it in. I don't know exactly when they're going to happen, but it's coming.
I'll talk a lot about a quick thing. We talk a lot about connectivity. We have goat paths on this side of 400. We have kids that walk from G apartments by Target to Centennial High School every day on a goat path. We have people walking from, I think it's Paramount, coming the other way on a goat path. So we don't even have sidewalks along, or along Hulken Bridge. We just put in a brand-new development, the Job Wheeling. There's enough space for maybe two cars to sit in that middle lane to make a left turn on the stop road. There's a lot of things that we need to do before we even build anything else in this area just to take care of our transportation through East Roswell.
I have a question for the DDA and their comment. My question is, in a concrete jungle that Hulken Bridge Road is coming along, how do we create vibrancy? And then my comment is, I hear a lot of things that we want the city to do. And I mean, I'm a younger guy, so forgive me. But if we brag about having the lowest village rate in Hulken County and we don't have the money to do these things, why do we have the lowest village rate in Hulken County? And I'm not going to run for office and say I want to raise everyone's taxes. If we want trails, to fill them to go trails, if we want, like you talked about golf cart paths, it's going to take cities, you know, it's going to take funding. We got to come up with money.
Here's the good news on transportation and on sidewalks. I want to thank everyone in this room who voted for the three-quarter penny teach class. We have $90 million over the next five years. And that will not be just spent on roads, but it will be spent on sidewalks and multipurpose trails. We have, we have, I'm not going to say we have more money than we can spend. But we have all the money that we can manage over the next five years. You're going to have a very busy transportation department. You're going to see lots of cones. You're going to see lots of improvements. And so it's not from lack of, in the past, I will tell you, we did not have the money to make all the projects that we could have done. Right now, we've got all the projects we can manage thanks to you. And you're going to be seeing some transportation improvements, not just for cars, but for folks who walk and for folks who bicycle. And perhaps one day, for folks who want to get in their golf cart that they can get somewhere than just outside of there.
Does that mean the reversible lanes on Highway 9 is a reminder that that project is going to go through sometime soon? Because we've been hearing about it for decades.
Yes, it will go through in your lifetime.
I've been there for 15 years.
All these reversible lanes on South Atlantis Street. We're, we're before GDOT right now getting approval for the plans. There's money in the teach class for it. That plan, we hope to have that in the next five years. So maybe Steve didn't look closely, but it's not, and it's, you know, we hope to have that project moving forward soon. But I will tell you, when you're dealing with a, the National Park Service and the Historic District and the engineering and approvals, it takes a long time to get this process. We have been working on it for a long time and we're making real progress. And I hope to see that project open in five or less.
Okay. The rest would sound like a number of white house press. I want to ask a couple of questions and then make a couple of observations. First question is, what is your definition in code of a mixed-use development?
You're at the, in our code, it means more than, it's not just retail. It's not just offices. It can include commercial, retail, restaurant, recreational, a number of different uses. I will tell you, don't think of mixed-use projects because I don't think that's what you really need. Think of a community in which you can walk to things, in which you don't have to get in your car to get there. And that means a lot of uses close together. Dave Schmidt began this by saying, we begin with a process of one use here and one use there. A, a walkable community requires a lot of uses close together, which requires a mixture of uses. So I believe in walkable communities where we can walk to things and that's where the demand is. I think that's where our opportunities are.
Which obviously, kind of by definition, is a mixed-use development.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Are there guidelines in the code ordinances with respect to how much, what percentage retail? And are you including institutional and office in commercial? Or is that a separate?
I'm going to let an expert answer this question. Dallas, wait for me.
Mixed use can be a variety of things. We don't say it has to be a certain percentage of any one thing because that's market-driven. What I think it gets confusing for the community, and this goes back to the question before, is that previously, the way that they did mixed use was you put the apartments here, you put the retail here, you put the office here. You put some other use here and you called it mixed use. Well, that's not really how mixed use is done, man. If you go to, like, Avalon is a perfect example of how you do mixed use. You have the retail on top. You have some, retail on the bottom. You have some, offices on top. Or you have apartments or condos on the top. And so you mix the uses in the building. And in our code, what we do to try to encourage that for a newer development is that we, we regulate by building type. So we encourage you, if you want to do a mixed-use development, you do a mixed-use building so that you can have the retail office or retail residential.
All right. Another question. Another question, are there any current building permits for any more development from 400 to Buette along Hulken Bridge?
Dallas, that's your question.
If you're, no, there may be some single, Scott Roads, but I don't want that building to mix into the issue yet, but Scott Roads going through the process of that, a residential development. Aldis, which, okay, Aldis, but again, the Aldis, that was part of development, that was part of a previous site plan, a previous, the older way of thinking of mixed use.
Is it, is it going to be developed?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I would like to discuss, so here's the problem here, one of my questions is, and I'm just trying to kind of pop on some of what some of the gentlemen said, you did a lot of studies for the DDA, right?
Yes, sir.
And those studies probably include demographics, highest and best use, economic impact, social impact, how many of those have you done for East Roswell?
The city commissioned about, in 2011, 2012, the city's first economic development plan. And that was a high-level economic development plan, and that was done for the entire city. The city, about a year ago, commissioned, not commissioned, but funded the approval of a redevelopment plan, an actual master plan for the northwest, southwest quarter of Georgia 400. And that includes the apartment complexes and those areas on both sides. The transportation department did a, some master plan effort on the east side of Roswell.
With all due respect, I'm just asking. Sir, with all due respect and answers, there's not been any specific studies.
We have not done the, we have not done the entire core.
All right, just to probably dispel another rumor, Aldi companies, I shopped at Kroger in the Estonberry at Barnwell, and all of a sudden here, I'm getting all these question there, how far would you go out of your way to go to the Kroger? Is Kroger closed, would you do this, would you do that? Then I go by the Kroger up here at Centennial, where I'm digging, looks like, putting fuel tanks. So, I'm surprised he's got a lot, but I'm saying, this looks like that Kroger may close, and we're gonna have one down here, so with all due respect, why the hell would we need another Aldi right across from Worshe Bend when you've got two that have closed? And I'm gonna sit down now, hear the problem. I'm a customer of those, I appreciate it. We have appraised mixed-use developments, we've gone all over the metropolitan statistical area. I will tell you, in areas that don't have a real dense population, we have gone back and done for bankruptcy. This area does not have a dense enough population, because you're talking about shopping, office, restaurants, you're talking about arts, you gotta have all of those things to pull people in, if they're gonna live there in a mixed-use development. Party is not gonna do it. So, sorry for taking up all your time, but, you know, we are the stepchild here, and, you know, we're kind of tired of it. We have homes, and we're worried about the banks. And, you know, just please stop this Aldi thing, we don't need it.
All right, we're gonna take one little question, and we'll try to wrap this up.
This man right here, he's had a microphone been waiting. She's been waiting. My name is Mark Wise, who moved in Roswell since 1980, great students, now has school systems, and he's going to have here. But here's a question for you, you know, we talked about connectivity, but we don't necessarily talk about connectivity across Hulken Bridge. Now, actually, that's an issue. There has to be a way to safely cross Hulken Bridge, and it's not, that's traffic light on the street. I don't think anybody would consider that very safe, and it is. I know people do it, but I always, you know, with a missile now, you're always getting the words about the traffic accident of Hulken Bridge, so there are some issues there, too. So I think that would be something that would help, that certainly would have helped that necessary target, but some of the restaurants that were at, where Target was, the Einstein is there, you had, you know, Office Park, a small condominium, where I saw the street. That's big for them to get, they're dry.
Steve, you wanna add something about connectivity across, across Ford?
Sure, just briefly, so Mayor mentioned T-Spot, thank you all very much for voting for it, $93 million in five years, it's gonna be amazing. The 70%, 75% of our program in Tier One involves the Big Creek Parkway, okay? So we're gonna have a new connection from Hulken Woods Parkway over to Warsaw, it's gonna cross over Georgia 400, it's not going to connect to Georgia 400. It's gonna be like our Onport Parkway that they have up in Alpharetta. So what that is gonna design to do is actually help us, as the local residents go back and forth across Georgia 400, because Highway 140 connecting to Highway 92 is the first regional east-west highway in the G-DOT system north of 285, and it's eight miles north of 285. So, so we have some structural issues that we're trying to deal with here in Roswell, but the Big Creek Parkway's gonna do a lot to help you cross back and forth across.
That's not a question. The question is, how do you get from the south side, how can we get to the west side? How would somebody who's on the north side of Hulken Bridge, maybe it's the, the park, the two homes, the wheeling, get to the Roswell Library and save?
Yeah, well, that's a long question. I'll give you my business card, and I'll be happy to talk to you.
Well, as I'm saying, though, that's part of the, I think it's part of the solution, to figure out a safe way to get across.
Yes, I agree with you.
One more question, I know you've been waiting for a long time, we're gonna have one more question, we're gonna go a little over nine o'clock, and then we've got another meeting next week, we're gonna hear from more people, but I think, do it.
I can't. Two more. As quick as I can, I don't need a microphone, I've got it very loud now. Okay, first question, do we have vehicles, even the website, something for us as a community to funnel ideas into the decision making? Number one. Number two, I know, I'm not speaking for everybody that lives in East Roswell, I'm speaking for me, Judy. I feel so separated from what's happening on the other side of 400. It's not just a highway, it is a wall to me, okay? I don't feel included. And again, I've only lived here for a couple of years, but I am a homeowner, and I would love to be included in everything that happens with Roswell. We talking about the quadrants, we are one city. We need to include everybody equally. And I feel that we have, somebody said it earlier, we are the stepchild, and I feel that, as a new citizen of Roswell and Georgia for about two and a half years. I don't care about if we have the big Target, I do care about that we have an empty building. I live right next door, I live in Uland Hall, right next door to the empty Target. Somebody said earlier, they never did fill all of those stores, I agree, there's empty stores there. We need to find a way to bring people in, businesses in to this, so we don't have an empty store. There have been, since I've moved here, large semis parking in that lot. What's going to happen? What is that going to bring to our community? Again, we're in the east. I personally, not speaking for anybody else that lives in the east, I feel disconnected from Watcherell City. I tell everybody, I live in Roswell, I've said that before, I'll say it again, because I feel disconnected. I would love to feel connected, and I will volunteer to do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Don, don't worry. Steve, consider for our campaign, we've got.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, Don, I'll get you in a second. Let's just, let me, let me, let me wrap up, and then I'll introduce you. Steve? We're done.
No, she's away, she's away for 15, 20 minutes.
I just wanted to say, one of the visitors, for Hannah, I live in Alstead, that people refer to John Island. And I've lived in Roswell since 2003, I moved from Worshe Bend to Alstead because I wanted a more walkable lifestyle, I wanted the sidewalks. It's true, it's treacherous, we do cross it, we crossed tonight, we crossed Hulken Bridge, it's crazy. But we walk to the Kroger, we walk a lot, and so I just really wanna encourage people in the room, as well as city council, to allow that type of dense development. We live in the single-family homes, but there's townhomes, too, but it's, it's a lot more, last month they sold 14 lots. So that kind of development is selling, and it's needed. So, you know, I just wanna say to everybody in the room, as well as, you know, all of you, I think you might be the easy ones, but sometimes our neighbors think, oh, that's too dense, but there's, there's room in Roswell for everyone.
All right, I wanna thank everyone for coming. I'm gonna get there. I'm wrapping up, and I'm gonna recognize Councilmember Horton and Councilmember Orlands. Councilmember Orlands, are you out of the room again?
No.
All right, before we go, I wanna hear from them. I wanna tell you, there's another town hall meeting, which Councilmember Zapata is sponsoring next week at the same site. To look upon this as a beginning, I know that many of you did not get a chance to speak, we're going to be continuing this conversation. I think you have made a clear, the clear message is that we need to do some things. I will tell you, as a, as your, one of your seven elected representatives, a vote-in-at-large, I'm not still, I'm not sure I have a consensus at this meeting, what you want, and that's what we need to reach, is a, is a, not a unanimous vision, but a vision in which we feel that we've got the buy-in of the majority and what's good for the community. We wanna work on that. So there's another meeting next week that Councilmember Zapata's sponsoring, I expect council will be bringing forward proposals about continuing this conversation. DDA told me to remind you, they're volunteers, and they, and they'll take your calls, but they're not available at all times, and they're not, they're not, but the, you wanna get hold of, we've got every council member's, phone numbers are published, their emails are published, they're a very responsive council, you can get hold of them. We've got an election coming up, those folks are, some of those folks are here tonight, and they'll be running, we want you to take a hard look at these candidates and elect somebody that you think will be helping you out. So with that, I wanna recognize first Councilmember Horton, and then Councilmember Orlands, for any comments from them before we wrap this up.
I just wanna say a couple of things. First of all, this is the beginning of a conversation, and that conversation requires your input. One of the things I want you to think about is, what do you, what do you want? You have to be thinking about what you're willing to accept. Much of Roswell is already built up, about 95% built up, with only about 5% maybe of development, or maybe developed property. So with 95% built up, most of what we have is already established, the big rock stores that are closing right now over on this side. So we have to think about what kind of an incentive can we come up with to get an investor to come in and redevelop their property? Most of you probably have a savings account, at a bank, maybe you get a quarter, 1% of interest on it. Not a whole lot of risk in it, you get a whole, you get all of your money back, you might get a quarter percent interest. Probably does not keep up with inflation. Some of you may own mutual funds, stock mutual funds, a little bit more risk, but you expect that you're gonna hire, get a higher return. When you're talking about redeveloping property, there's a whole lot more risk involved in that, so the return on investment has to be significantly higher than it would be if you're buying a stock or buying a mutual fund. So you have to understand that there's only one thing to do, if the property is priced at a certain level, and you want somebody to come in and redevelop that, that developer has to get a return on investment that's gonna cover things like the risk he's gonna take. What if they start a development, and then there's a significant downturn in the economy? That developer has to be able to withstand that downturn, so we have to have more money set aside to cover that. So the return on investment is much more significant for redeveloping property than it is for even developing green, green property, property that's never been developed. So you have to think about that, what kinds of things are you willing to accept to get somebody to come in to redevelop those properties, to do something different with them, other than getting classy tenants. I just want you to think about that, from an investment standpoint, if you're a saver, that's one thing, you don't wanna take any risks. But if you're in real estate, and if you're a real estate developer, you're willing to take a lot more risk, you're willing to put more money of yours on the line, but in return, you expect a higher return.
Councilmember Orlands.
I'm a homeowner, I, I own real estate.
This is not an opportunity for public comment, Councilmember Orlands, we're gonna have another meeting in a week, more public comment at that time.
Well, you heard from the experts, you heard from our investment council member, so I don't want to keep you working.
It's not working.
Keep you guys here too much longer, sorry.
They're here, they're here.
Don't wanna keep you here too much longer.
Not working.
I did wanna clarify.
I did wanna clarify one question about the Gateway Project on South Atlanta Street. That is coming, it won't take your lifetime, you should, you should see it starting and completing in the next few years. It is under G-DOT control, we are pushing as much as we can and as best we can to move their time frames up, so that is coming, not exactly your lifetime, it'll be quicker, much quicker than that. Don was talking about the economics, economics of redevelopment, you not only have to buy a piece of land and build something when there's nothing there, but you have to buy whatever the going concern is, that business, the buildings, tear them down and start over again, so redevelopment is much more costly, so those are the things that have to be considered by investors and developers coming in, and we have to try to work with them and balance off what they need from the economic side, and what we need from the community side, and what we need from you guys to help with. So again, you've heard enough tonight, I don't wanna take up any more time, but keep in touch with us and let us know what you're thinking.
Okay, before we leave, this is what I hear is on the list, one, look at expanding the downtown development authority, or creating a new development authority to extend all the way to Buette County, the council will look at that. The council has heard from you that we wanna have, continue this conversation, the council looking at doing an economic study on this as a foundation for what's feasible to redevelop, so we're gonna be looking at that. But it'd be, the toughest question that the council has is what does this community want to see, what's acceptable to this community? And we cannot answer that question. It's going to take your involvement to say, this is what we wanna see. Now, just because you wanna see it doesn't mean you get it, but at least that's the beginning point, what's your vision as constrained by the finances? Let's develop a vision from this community. If we have a vision from you, we can accomplish that vision. The problem has been lack of vision, but I'm depending upon lack of a consensus as that vision. We need to develop a consensus, it's gonna take a longer conversation, it's gonna have to blend many different opinions, some folks may not get what they want, but at the end of the day, we're gonna have a stronger community, and it's gonna be a community which you designed. So stay involved, the next meeting is next Wednesday night, Mr. Zapata's putting that on, council will be coming forward, and those will be just beginning the conversations, and I hope you will continue. Now Kay mentioned, where can you go to get more information? Kay Long, our city administrator.
Hi, everybody, I know I'm standing between you and the door, so I'll be really brief. To help us get organized and capture your thoughts and ideas, look for something on our website, and the next day, we should be able to get it up tomorrow, for you to be able to submit your ideas and thoughts and comments and questions, so you're not worried about whose email, and will it get caught up in spam and all of that. So that will be the best way for us to get organized and through these meetings, so to continue to capture. So please, please go on the website, www.roswellgov.com, and then you can give us your comments, and we are looking forward to that.
Thanks for coming.